I'd like to call to order the Douglas zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, May 3 at 7:04 PM. The first agenda item is a public hearing for Susan Poopman, case number 2023-07, 62 Peters Cove Road, and the date of the application was April 10. The following was posted in the Town Hall and also advertised in the Worcester Telegram Gazette, and it reads as follows. The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, May 3, 2023, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. To hear the following application. Susan Poopman is requesting a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and Section 9.2 of the Douglas bylaws for side yard setback relief under Dimensional Regulations, Appendix B, to expand a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling in an RA Zone District. The property is located at 62 Peters Cove Road, MAP 158, Parcel 1. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. So, I'm going to recuse myself from this hearing, and Mr. Fitzpatrick is going to chair this hearing. Thanks, Mike.
Yep. Jim.
And I'm going to accuse myself also.
Okay, but so, before we go any further, we have an issue. You need, on variances and special permits, you need four votes. We only have three members.
We only have five members?
No.
I know what you're saying.
We only have three members that are voting. No, we have five members in total, but if two recuse themselves, we have a problem.
Okay.
I was aware of the fact that the chairman was going to have to recuse himself in advance because I'm the vice chairman of the thing.
Yes.
We'll get into the rest of this after I just have to give a little instruction. In the future, either Jen, the chair, or myself need to know ahead of time because a lot of people have come out to do this, and now we can't. We could hear the case, but they couldn't get a vote. So, I don't think that we should hear the case at this point. I don't know what to do with this at this point.
Yeah.
Mr. Knappich, could you come up?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ron Knappich. I'm counsel to the applicant. And you're right, you're a five-member board. As I understand it, presently we have four full members and an alternate, which would make five.
Yep.
But one full member, two members have recused themselves, so that reduces your number to three, and for, the statute provides it for the grant of a variance that requires four out of five, not just the majority or even unanimity of those sitting, which would be three, but four out of five.
Correct.
So obviously, we can't do that. And therefore, I think there's a need to continue the hearing. I'm not entirely sure what happens in that case. It may be that the selectmen may sit.
Well, in some cases, that's what happens, but if everybody would excuse me for a minute, I want to go talk, I already know what Dan's situation is because we talked about it.
Yeah.
I need to understand what Jim's is, because in the past, the applicants coming in as an individual, so if there's a conflict because of the corporation, one is different than the other, and that's part of the ethics board, because I've called myself that.
I understand.
So I'm just going to go ask.
Sometimes a mere disclosure is...
Right, I just need to understand why the other member...
Jim, why do you recuse yourself?
What I would suggest is we continue this, and then we can get advice from Town Council as well as some direction as to how we do this.
That makes sense. You're voting to public hearing, so...
I want to continue it, so...
To the extent you need it, this is a request from the applicant that you continue the public hearing.
Yes, so, I don't even know if we have any of those forms. I'd have to ask Dan, but you could just send in something for 30 days, just to continue it for the 30 days beyond the decision date.
Okay.
Sorry for everybody's inconvenience that's come for this case tonight, but hopefully everybody understands what it is. It's in any variance or special permit, you need four people to vote on it, and we only have three. Thank you. I'm sure Dan will see to come back in. Yeah. He'll come back in. He'll see him go out. He should come back in, I hope.
They both got to come back in.
Both of them? We only need one. I don't know. Maybe we'll be down the hall in the office.
Never.
Yeah, I'll talk. Well, I didn't either. So. We'll talk to Jay.
Would it happen to continue it?
Yeah. So this next one, Dan, I do want to make a comment, but I am going to refuse myself.
Yeah, first.
Yeah. So, as you know, we continued it. I just told them that. We'll notify them as to what the next step would be.
Yeah.
And they're going to send in a notice. He's going to send in for the 30-day continuance.
We've got to wait 15 minutes, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 7:15. So, so everybody understands we've got to wait until the posted time of 7:15.
Oops, sorry.
Too many rules.
The next agenda item was advertised at 7:15, and we can't start early, but we will start on time.
That was easy. The item had to be a long case. You gave me an easy one. Oh. Oh, I think so it's him. I'm sorry. Oh, is it up online? No, I don't believe so. You can ask. I don't think it's giving one.
Do all the clocks any?
Yes. Yeah, we're not starting. We've got another two minutes.
7:14.
Up to the discretion of the board, too.
You can't do that. This is supposed to be 7:15.
I can clear my throat for a minute.
Yeah, you can.
Want to go back and pod Wonga?
Behave yourself, Henry. Behave yourself.
He's trying. He's trying.
He has to be bad.
He's trying. He's trying.
You're ready.
Ask Henry.
I just...
We're there.
We're there?
Henry says we're officially...
That's why I said you're ready.
Okay. The next agenda item is a public hearing for Stephen Black and Barbara Katzenberg, case number 2023-08, 310 Northwest Main Street, and the date of the application was April The following was posted in the Town Hall and also advertised in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and it reads as follows. The Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:00 PM on Wednesday, May 3, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the following application. Stephen Black and Barbara Katzenberg request a variance pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and Section 9.2 of the Douglas bylaws to reduce the area of their lot in order to convey land to the neighbor under Dimensional Regulations, Appendix B, in an RA Zone District. The property is located at 310 Northwest Main Street, MAP 159, Parcel 10. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Hearing this case will be Mr. Palmer, Mr. Forget, Mr. Bombarra, Mr. Fitzpatrick, and We have correspondence from our clerk that all the certified mailings have been returned, and the public hearing is now open.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself of a direct neighbor to both parties.
Okay.
Starting that again? Oh, you ain't leaving too, are you, Henry?
No, I'm not. You should come on.
Are you Henry? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members.
Excuse me. Point of vote, Mr. Chairman. By right, John, you should be leaving the room.
Sorry, but that's not true.
No?
He's allowed to stand alone.
Okay.
Been through this before already.
Can't vote, but it's, it could be construed as an...
It doesn't do any signals inside.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the floor's yours, Attorney Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. I am Henry Lane, and I do appear this evening on behalf of Mr. Black and Ms. Katzenberg. I expect that you have the applications in front of you.
Yes.
I'm not sure that you got the color-coded versions or not, but the color-coded versions did show the location of the 2,800 square feet of land that currently belongs to Mr. Black and Ms. Katzenberg, and for which they requested variance. As you can see from the plan, their lot, it's quite wide, it's not that deep, but quite wide, and it's about an acre in size, which is less than is currently required, but larger than most of the lots in unit neighborhood, as you can see from the plan. All the buddy lots are much smaller. And the lot has this sort of dog leg on the end that is really not of much use to them, but would provide frontage and access to their neighbor.
Henry, I don't think your microphone's working.
It's attorney.
I did that for you, Henry.
Thanks. Actually, I'm usually better off when people can't hear what I have to say, but...
That's what I was thinking.
Appreciate the vote of confidence. In any event, as I indicated, the original filing did have a color-coded copy of the plan. I don't know if you have it. Oh, you have it. It was in yellow.
I think everybody's got it.
Okay, so you can see that that corner of the lot really doesn't add anything to the lot that they have. It's just more of a, more of a burden than a benefit. Does have an old garage structure on it, which, again, is so far from the house that it doesn't really provide much utility. So, it's a little bit of an odd situation. It's not the greatest hardship you'll ever see, but in fact, it is an inconvenience, and the ability to convey that to the neighbor would significantly enhance the neighbor, which has a totally non-conforming lot. It would increase that lot size a little bit, but more importantly, it would provide frontage and better access. And I don't want to mislead the board. There is currently a house on the neighboring lot, and it's anticipated that if we are successful in obtaining the variance, that the neighbor, the randors, will probably be at a future meeting asking for a special permit to reconstruct their existing house, utilizing the new frontage and the better access. So, as you can see, there is a house there already, but they hope to be able to build a newer house that's set further back from the lake, using that small bit of additional land. So, it's basically a win-win for both peoples. It makes the lots a little more, the randor lot a little more complying, but without really reducing the Black-Katzenberg lot significantly. It doesn't really alter that at all. So, the basic, the basic balance doesn't change. It's still going to be two houses on two lots, just the randor lot will be slightly more conforming. The Black-Katzenberg lot will be slightly less conforming, but not in a significant way. So, I think this is one of those situations where we can have a win-win situation, and life will go on. And both parties are here, by the way, if you have questions.
Okay. The board members have questions or comments?
I wouldn't mind commenting on it.
Okay, go ahead.
Typically, you would, I would be opposed to trying to make something more non-conforming than what it is. Looking at it, other than the about six and a half feet short on the frontage, the setback on the frontage, but other than that, the structure is pretty much conforming within the regulations of what it is. A little short on the frontage, but not terrible. And being honest and sharing with us that in a future date, you're going to come forward, and it poses a new question, it's like, okay, so there's no frontage on this lot, how are we going to, how are we going to get a permit? So, you're kind of chasing your tail a little bit with it. So, considering all that, it appears that it would improve this secondary lot, even though it's taken a little bit of frontage office, but there's such a setback from these other structures, I would assume that that garage is going to be razed and taken off the lot, Henry?
Yes.
Yes.
That's part of the, part of the agreement.
That, that's the only comment that I have on that.
Okay. Any other members like to speak on this?
No.
Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on this? Mr. Bombar?
Yes, only because I live next door. The topography of the land that's there now is so steep, and I think what the randors are trying to do is push the house back a little bit so they wouldn't have a driveway section, if anyone's ever seen it. I'll give you one story. It was two years ago on Christmas, around Christmas time. There was a delivery truck that came down, and of course, if their GPS turned them in the wrong driveway, that truck came, I was in the kitchen window looking towards the randor's home. That came, the van came down sideways, down towards the lake, missed probably by 25 feet to go in the lake. I called the police department downstairs. They came up, and I told them not to go in the driveway. They did. Not only did he smash up a cruiser, but took out a couple of other things. So, I guess what I'm saying, it's such a steep angle, most of the people can't get off. The randor's going to have to push that house back to make it work for them to have built a new home. So I'm in favor of this.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this application?
Push it back away from the pond or away from the street?
Away from the pond.
It all depends on, all depends on where you face it, where back is. So that's why I'm asking you.
The lakeside is supposed to be the front of the home, if you know what I mean.
So, in what, in what Mr. Bombar was saying then, if they do pull that forward, then they're going to have an issue with the front line setback, so they'll have a new problem to tackle.
I don't think we're going to have that. I think we'll be...
If it wasn't, if it wasn't approved and they came back...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Come on, Henry. Come with me, brother.
Just, just so it's clear, I'm not...
Yeah, no, I know that. I'm just teasing you tonight, Henry. That's all.
Oh, that's never happened before.
I know that.
The, the Black-Katzenberg lot does still have conforming frontage, so we're not changing that. They have...
Right. I was talking about the potential of the new construction of the other one, when it came forward or back, whichever way you were facing.
Yeah, this increases the width just a little at that.
It would, it would come close to that shape, that existing property line as it is today.
Right. This will provide it with some front yards so they can meet the setback requirements.
Yep.
Anybody else who would like to speak or be heard on this application? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Forget, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Jim Powell.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Aye, Dan Hinni. We're all here, but...
Yeah, that's okay.
No, I'm done. Okay. Would the board like to move forward with a decision tonight?
I'll make a motion to go through the plan as a desert.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right.
If we could just add to that, just for the minute, take a, the, that's going to be case number 2023-08, just so they have reference.
In the...
Yeah, yeah, I'm just helping you amend it a little bit, just so we have record of what case it was.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Forget, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, Jim Powell.
Aye, Ron Forget.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Aye, Dan Hinni. All right, the application's approved.
This is why you don't make up your mind until the very last minute, because my, my pre-thought was different.
See, Henry, another fast one, isn't it?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
See you, Tom.
Take care. Please, go on. Put that some more to mine.
I'll think about it.
Are they on here for something?
No.
No? Are you just hanging out?
We had, we had just a question about how we get in front of the zoning board. We started something yesterday with the builder department, so I really wasn't sure about some stuff, and that's, we have not, we actually have a lot next to them. We were looking to build on that, and so I was told that we have to have complete plans before we can apply for...
Have you been in the building's body and talked to the...
No, I spoke to Ken. I'm not sure. So I just wasn't 100% sure. Are you Ken?
I spoke with you.
Okay. So I just, I just like making sure that we're doing the right thing and...
So you've got a pre-existing non-conforming lot...
Yep.
That you want to get a bill, make it a buildable lot, and as I explained to you on the phone, you can't really make it a buildable lot if they don't know what you want to build on the lot.
Right, so I guess my question was, do you need a full house plan, or do we need a foundation? And I know you need the septic, but you're very clear about it. I just wanted to make sure.
I, like I said on the phone, that would be up to the board's decision, but whatever you presented to the board would have to be what was actually going on the lot. I don't be looking for... So that's why I said, do you need your... Proposed plot plan. Building plan and your septic plan, so they know what's going on the lot, which you're proposing to build.
So you need your final plan, is what you said?
That was what I had said.
Okay. I didn't understand.
The board...
Chairman, get into the...
It's up to the board.
I'm sorry I missed some of that answer. I apologize.
So, I received a call about 278 Northwest Main Street.
Yes, thank you.
Pre-existing non-conforming lot, has a small camp on it or trailers or...
Yeah, it has a small, it has a shed on it, an outhouse.
A shed and a trailer or whatever. They wanted to find out what they needed to do to make it a, you know, a buildable lot. I explained to them, to make a buildable lot, they would need to have a full set of plans showing the septic, well, house, what they're proposing to do in the lot, in order for the board to be able to make a determination if it's a buildable lot within the setbacks and everything else. Has it ever had a structure on it?
It's got a shed over it.
Other than the shed, has it had a house on it? Not that I can find.
Okay.
That, that's a fatal thing. That's why I'm asking you, just to make sure, because if you had one and it burnt down or you demolished it and out there, what's it, three years, Ken?
Yeah, no, so...
Three years, then... That's three years. Then you lose your buildable status, so...
And I'm not part of the cost, I just wanted to make sure that we're doing like...
Yep.
Because it's a big investment to go and have, to get a whole, whole design of a house brought up, and then, you know...
Well, you don't have to do a complete design for us. If we had a...
I have a site plan, but I don't have a...
If we had, let me finish, had a engineered stamped site plan showing what you wanted to do, right, and you had a conceptual drawing of what you wanted to put up there, we don't need, he needs a complete set of drawings, but if we know what you're going to build, you're going to build a 50-foot tall house. No, you can't anyways, but, or you're going to put a little range out, just so we have an idea what you're going to put in, because there's a couple of different things we look at, the character of the neighborhood and things like that, so...
Right, yeah. Yeah, we're looking at what's already existing in the neighborhood.
Yep.
Right, so we're just looking at what's already existing in the neighborhood.
John.
I was not. Jeez. So, yeah, and I don't mean any disrespect, I just, this is all new to us. I've never done anything like this.
Yeah, not only am I trying to make you go through a lot of expense, but we at least need a, a stamped plan to show that, because you're going to, you might think your land goes in one direction, but it could go in another, so that's what the survey plan actually does.
So we have, we've had that, we have the survey done and the, so we have a site plan done, survey done. We don't have, like, we have the locations where the well will be, where the septic will be, where the foundation footprint would be in with its proper setbacks.
Yep.
So we have all that, but I was just...
So did you just make a rectangle, or did you make it?
I haven't.
I don't want to get into the...
No, no, that's fine.
If it's just a rectangle that says the house is going to roughly go here, but if it's the actual shape of your house, is what you're looking for.
You look for the shape. So that, my only concern was just like building up, and like, I was told it's going to be like five to 10 grand just to get planned. So I was like, all right, that's a lot of money to find out what I could possibly turn away, but, you know, so that's, that's why I was... I was concerned, so I was like, just want to make sure that I'm.
If you have a good idea, conceptual plan of what you're going to do, you're going to know if it's going to have jogs and whatnot, and I'm sorry.
As I explained it to them, it's because you guys would be looking for requirements for the setbacks, even though it's a VR lot, when it was designed, it's still going to beat the setbacks for RA, so you don't require the setbacks, you're going to need to know that everything's within the setbacks that need to be within it, so the only way I can see that you can really get the accuracy is to know what's being built there.
Yep.
If you don't have that, that you're proving a lot that, I don't know, it's.
Really-nilly, yeah.
Yep, a stamped plan would.
That shed's been on there.
A stamped site plan, and if you have a conceptual idea of what you're going to build for a house, because then you're, whoever's doing your plan's going to be able to plot that, the shape of that house on there.
Okay, so.
You don't have to get crazy and have a full set of drawings.
Oh, all right, so that's what I was kind of having, I mean.
Something that shows what an elevation is.
What I had said to you. Correct me with that, with that before, you said just the interior.
I said, if they showed the, the foundation, and that's what the foundation's going to be, whether it's going to be a ranch or a two-story home, if they show, show the foundation, they show them the location, and that's what it's going to be, the foundation, that's what they can bring in.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, you, you were clear about that, about the interior, like, you, you did tell me about, like, hey, if you, if the interior has, like, the living room's big or small, you said that's fine.
Right.
I, I just wondered, like, honestly, I was, I was very confused about, like, and not, just my fault, not yours.
No.
About what I needed for, like, do I need, like, I, we go online, we have plans available, like, you see those online, is that acceptable to say, we like this, this is what we want, this is the footprint, we're going to stay with it, and then if you go, say, I do pick a plan, and it's 40 feet by 60 feet, whatever the size is, right, and you go, okay, then I build the house, and it's 38 by 58, you go, well, it got smaller than the original, it's still a single-story house, I mean.
If it's smaller, it's not going to be a problem, if it's bigger, and you, if we tell you that you can be 10 feet from the sideline, 20 feet from the front line, and so on and so forth, and you end up further away from those lines, you're okay.
Okay.
If you go closer to them, you've got a problem.
I have, yeah, I completely understand that.
So, that's all, that's all it is, so.
Just don't copy the 10 feet and the 25 feet, he's making these, you know.
No, no, I, I work for the city, that would be.
Ken will take care of, right, Ken will take care of that, that bottom right there, but I, I want to make sure you understand that.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm very, yes, thank you, John, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of those plans online will actually show you what the size of the foundation is, and you can use something like that, and you don't have to spend a million dollars, you just.
Okay, yes, if I can get a copy of that.
If you just have an idea of what you're going to put up there, because there's a couple of different things, and that'll fall into his category, you come into something, and now it's 36 feet tall, because it's got a, it's got a turret on it, right, he's going to be like, uh, nope, because you only allow 35 feet, so.
I don't say that, that's what the, that's what the book says.
I, I've seen a Facebook post that he's a meanie.
Yeah, I don't.
I used to get hit there, you said this, I'm like, no, the gas code says this.
Yeah, yeah.
And same thing, they'd have to explain.
It's just, just understand what it is, so Ken has the full grasp as to what we're looking for, but we do need an actual plan that shows, I think this one should have.
May I?
Sure, if you don't mind.
If that would.
Wait, you come from Medford, where you.
This one.
Take care, sweetie.
That's a tip, you can even leave closing the doors when I was a kid.
It has an engine at the stand.
Yeah.
And then it's just showing you all your lines, your setbacks, that's all, that's what we're looking for.
Okay, oh, so that's just, so this is like the foundation?
Just for.
Yeah, it's the shape of the house.
I tell everybody who calls.
Okay, well, that's my question.
From the outside.
Buildable, non-buildable.
Can't see it.
The board needs to have a visual, because they, they're not on the land, they don't see anything.
It's going to show you the difference.
You're looking to get a lot approved.
Okay.
That's a free type, non-conforming lot.
We did hire one.
Know.
Yeah, you have to plot the house.
Does it conform to the setbacks?
Yeah, that's why.
Something that's so easy.
You should have your septic.
They're talking about.
Well, and at least your foundation, you'd better to have some kind of a structure on it, showing.
The engineering, the size of the stuff.
Nobody knows, nobody knows either the way.
I don't have a little.
They haven't built anything, I know, that's probably four, four grand, but, you know. Thank you, it's all right.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You can help them out, that's all, if you can.
That's what we're here for.
Oh, and she went to school here, but I can't tell you when.
Say what?
She went to school here, and I can't tell you when.
Yeah.
She's definitely younger than you are.
Who are you?
Well, most people are.
John, time is better on some people than others.
She doesn't look it either, so we're clear.
All right, let's finish up here.
The next agenda item is a discussion of North Brown LLC.
Okay.
We do have a daily construction report.
Have a good night.
Thank you for your help, thank you very much.
Good night.
Nice to see you.
You want to take this one over, Ken?
All right, so we get the, the daily construction report, I don't see that there's anything more added than what we've been dealing with on a, on a normal basis with their construction. I did issue permits for a foundation for 10 and 11, uh, 10 and 12, which the foundation is for. My understanding is all units that are on Nautical Way are under PNS.
Okay.
I think one has actually transferred. Is there any questions with regards to that?
No.
I had a gentleman come into the office today, that's why this is blasphemous paperwork in your, in your files, Mr. Neil Newton, came in from 32 Compass Point, he has concerns with the condition of the road, his driveway, he was questioning the water retention basins, the storm, the rain gardens and such.
Is this in the area of the system?
Some of it is, but it's, it's a general all-over. He, he came in with the, he's had a problem with his driveway. Neil Reibicki was going to go in and remove the driveway, put a new driveway in, he didn't want that, unless they, no, I apologize, misspoke, they were going to do a finish coat on the guy's driveway. It's deteriorated on the bottom corner, and he's saying there's tire track run area going up, so he's questioning the base underneath the driveway, as to whether it would conform, and if they just put a finish coat on it, is it going to fail? So he doesn't want him to do a finish coat, which I explained to him, that I would prefer that you do all of your finish coat at the same time, your road, your driveway, blend everything in, so that the town isn't looking, or, or the association isn't looking at failures on joints between all that work. So I said to Mr. Newton, I says, well, they're willing to go in and patch the end of the driveway at this point. I spoke with Neil Reibicki, he said that he had consultation, they had the guy over there ready to do the work, and Mr. Newton told him no, because they were, so there's a miscommunication between the two of them. I said, listen, at the end of the day, let's get his driveway patched. He, he doesn't want a full final base on it, which I explained as our last meeting, that we were, there was concerns with regards to the sub-basin, a lot of areas in the roadway, especially with extensive cracking on the base coat of asphalt, and what's underneath it. So why would we want to do the driveways if there's a safe situation?
Yeah.
So I think I resolved that to the point where they're going to patch, patch his driveway.
Okay.
Then he brought in, if you look at this paper, that's got the highlighting in it, with regards to the stormwater gutter runoff from the houses, and saying that the gutters are supposed to be going into.
Dry wells.
Dry wells.
Mm-hmm.
So, lucky what it is, Neil Reibicki happened to show up at the office today before I even got a chance to call him. So I gave him this list, and I says, I want you to go over this list and give me a checklist of what you're proposing to do. He came back to me about two hours later and said, this write-up is with regards to anything within conservation control within the 100-foot setbacks. So if any of the downspouts are going into anything within the 100-foot conservation controls, then they need to go through a, I'll call it a pre-purification, a dry well, before it goes into stormwater management system. None of them do. I looked at the drawings, none of the storm drains, gutters, whatever you want to call them, possible structures, are within the 100-foot setbacks. So, that being said, this really is not a viable issue to start that goes. When I say that, I copulate conservation stormwater management order conditions.
Order of conditions.
When was this dropped off?
Today.
Today. This was dropped off today?
All of it was. Yeah, at a very slow date.
Has it been forwarded to the conservation, even though it's out of conservation, but you're citing all these conservation commission stuff?
I took what's in here, this is the order of conditions.
Yeah.
And applied it with this, and looked at the plans.
Yeah.
I did not talk with Steve Zisk or anybody in conservation.
So the answer is no, so I would at least forward this to the conservation agent, because it's, it's addressed to them.
Yeah.
All right, I'm not, I agree with what you're saying, but it's addressed to them, so that way it can't come back on us at any point.
So I will have a conversation with our agency, this.
Yeah.
With regards to the gutter drains on the structures, and the requirements and follow-up, to make sure that what's in here is what's in here is what's actually being there.
I would like to see a memo come back from conservation stating it's outside their jurisdiction, whatever it is, because we're overseeing this, this project, just to cover ourselves, to make sure that down the road, we're not accused of not following the proper procedure. Who's the chairman of the conservation commission nowadays?
Tracy.
Tracy Sharkey, I believe, is the chair, so.
Yep.
That it's outside of their jurisdiction?
Yeah, just, just so we have something that says that it was, the complaint came in, we forwarded it to them, they turn around and say it's outside our jurisdiction, there's no action to be taken by the conservation commission, then we just have something in the file, that's all.
Or it is.
Yeah, if there is, there is, so at least.
You should like to do this very quickly.
Well, everybody has their role, and yours is building, and theirs is conservation, let them say yea and nay to it. I, I don't disagree with anything you said, but to keep us clean, the safer way. Any luck on the potholes on the, on the access road?
So the potholes, they've had a company in, supposed to be, they were supposed to be in there this week, but due to rain and all that, they've put it off till next week. They have been in there marking areas that they're going to be repairing potholes.
Yeah.
I did ask him, because I know I was in there today, I believe I was in there yesterday, and as I go through, I always make it a point to drive the whole development, that they stopped marking everything at Nautical Way on the main road, and there's still a few items down below that I noticed. So I did ask Neil Reibicki, I says, what they marked is all they're doing, and he says, I don't know, I can get that answer for you, I haven't gotten that answer yet. My response to him was, the potholes in the roads and driveways will be fixed right. So whether that's all they have marked, they will be fixed, and I'll follow over.
All right.
Thank you.
The last agenda item we have was the minutes of March 1st, I don't know if everybody had a chance to review them.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written. On March 1st, 23.
You signed that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bamar to approve the minutes of March 1st as written, second by Mr. Fitzpatrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wasn't there like four more we haven't done yet, maybe?
No, they don't fix them, I think we.
No, we put it off last month.
Oh, what's it?
Well, because there's a list, I remember writing down a list of them. This is March, well, we only have April, there's only April after this.
Yeah.
So.
When Jen gets back.
On the bottom of your, if it doesn't say, I taped mine up, I can't read it. I mean, last month, I remember having, I was ready for it, but. Can we, we postponed it, go back to North Brown for a minute?
Yeah.
I have a question for.
Sure.
Where are we at with our ratio for affordables?
I don't know the exact numbers, I'll check onto it.
Just to make sure that they stay on that.
I believe that they're, I believe that they're within their ratios, 16 and 4.
Yeah.
But I will check into it.
Yeah, just.
Four of 16, right?
Four of 16. Every 16 is four of them need to be the affordables.
Right, yeah.
I will check into it, I know that the Nautical Way section has two affordables in what they've been permitted right now, and I believe all of those are under PNS, they're not completely under PNS, but I will check into it, I'll have that information for you.
All right.
Do PNS, what stage is the house at?
So I believe one of them is plastered, and one of them is.
It's run.
And I only asked that because we ran into that problem in phase two, that the PNS was floating there for like two years.
Right.
Yeah.
I had, actually, today, I also had a call from an individual, I call it, I don't remember his name, who called up asking if we have a 40B.
What was the, what was the decision?
Meaning waitlist to get on 40B.
We don't have enough.
And I told him, no, that's a town that doesn't have a 40B list. But I did direct him to North Brown and told him, get ahold of the real estate sales up there, and have a conversation with them, because I know there's more affordables going in. Now, whether it's not being advertised, or how it's being advertised, or whatever, I don't know.
That's how they did it at the beginning, they kind of got a little lax on it, and when they fell way behind, we made the suggestion to advertise everywhere, post office down all everywhere, and they did, and then they got flooded with.
I know this, this individual was very excited about the, thank you very much for